From the New Church for That One to lead us in our opening exercise today, if you all would rise. Welcome you.
Thank you very much, and it's a pleasure to be here, and I thank you, Rita, you got me here because, yes, I needed to come more.
See your old friends.
That's great. Dear Lord, we thank you so much for the opportunity to be here today. We thank you for our life, health, and strength. We ask for special blessing upon-
On this meeting today, upon all these school board members, upon our Citrus County Schools, parents and faculty and staff, we ask your blessing to be upon them. We ask for safe schools. God, would you give us wisdom and direction, how to lead this county and how to lead this school board even better and in a greater dimension. We ask your blessing to be upon us today. We ask all this in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
The whole state of flag?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with reason and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Deutschman, and thank you Pastor for that invitation. I have one comment before we go to adopt the agenda. I have a request on the desk from Ms. Deutschman. She has requested a line item be added to the agenda during this period. It is to consider modification to the code of student conduct as it pertains to the attendance policy as it relates to high school grades. And as this board is aware, that there is a public hearing scheduled that we have on, I believe, our agenda today, no, May, for May 13th, to approve the 2014-2015 Code of Student Conduct. And so with that, I would like, because as Chair, it's my prerogative to add that agenda item. I am asking that that agenda item be added, and so I would just ask that anyone who makes a motion, if they would include that as part of the adopting of the agenda. Thank you, Ms. Powers. I think you have some people- Can we add that during Ed Services, which is, yeah, which is item A? And let's make that, let's make that A7 after the A. And so if we can add this, Ms. Deutschman's request for modification to the Code of Student Conduct as A7 under School Operations. Oh, I'm s- I'm four. Oh, I'm sorry, am I? I apologize. Thank you. Thank you.
You're gonna do it after.
H. Yes, 6A-H. I'm sorry.
Eight.
Eight?
It would go under School Operations, Mike Solomon, A is Educational Services.
Got it. Thank you, Mr. Bradshaw.
I move to adopt the agenda as recommended by Superintendents with the addition of 8A or A8 modification to School Conduct.
I have a motion by Ms. Powers to accept the agenda with the modification, and a second by Ms. Deutschman. Any discussion? All those in favor? I motion carries 5-0. And citizens' comments. Do we have any green cards? Thank you. There'll be a second opportunity at 5:30 for a topic on any item before the board. And with that, I will ask that we approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda. I'll second.
I have a motion by Ms. Bryant, a second by Ms. Balfour to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion on that? All those in favor? I motion carries 5-0. If we could do recognitions of donations, please, Ms. Bertarami.
Yes, to Mr. Taren. We have several donations on the consent agenda today. The first donation is to Marine Science Station, material labor for installation of wooden handrails to install the existing raised boardwalk from the local Boy Scouts. A $500 grant donation to the Cantor Primary School from Gen Youth Foundation. A $1,000 donation to Citrus Springs Elementary School from David and Kathleen Jackson. A $500 donation to Citrus High School from Emory's Juana's. A $750 donation to Press School from Homeless Sabbath's Community Club. An $850 donation to Press School from the Sons of American Legion. That includes our donations.
Thank you, Ms. Bertarami. And we have presentations we'll come back to at 5:00 PM. Businesses, Sports, Services, Mr. Blocker.
The first item on the agenda is to approve the Financial Operational Federal Single Audit Report for Citrus County School District, our Citrus County School Board for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2013.
I move to approve the Financial Operational Federal Single Audit Report of the Citrus County District School Board for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2013.
I have a motion by Ms. Powers, a second by Ms. Deutschman, to approve the Financial Operations and Federal Single Audit Report of the Citrus County School District School Board for the financial year ending June 30th, 2013. Any discussion?
Are you all to the clean?
Yes, if you turn to the, I'll just direct your attention to page 65. You should have all received an original from the Alters and Mail. Essentially, it's an unmodified pen and ink from the Alters, which is, used to be unqualified, now they say unmodified. That's the clean issue one. So there was really only two issues they brought to our attention. One was in reference to some MIS type of issues that we would resolve, and it was with the FTE reporting of adult students at WTI, which that issue has been resolved. No material changes to the financials at all, sort of, in respect to pretty much virtually a clean audit.
Any other discussions, board members? They're building them. I will call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
I motion carries 5-0.
Next item is to approve the cancellation or termination of fuel bid 2014-16 to Mansfield Oil and approve the revised bid award 2014-16 to Petroleum Traders Corporation.
I move to approve cancellation slash the termination of fuel bid 2014-16 to Mansfield Oil and approve revised award of bid 2014-16 to Petroleum Traders.
One second.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Now shall I add the termination?
Add that to the motion.
Yes.
I, did you do that? Okay, I just want to make sure that I seconded, that I got a second on that. I have a motion by Ms. Powers, a second by Ms. Balfour, to approve the cancellation, termination for convenience of fuel bid number 2014-16 to Mansfield Oil and approve revised award bid 2014-16 to Petroleum Traders Corporation. Any discussion? All those in favor? I motion carries 5-0.
Next item is approve the award of bid number 2014-33 Before and After School Care to the YMCA of the Sun Coast.
I move to approve the award of bid number 2014-33 Before and After School Care to YMCA of the Sun Coast.
I have a, I'm sorry, did you? I have a motion by Ms. Bryant, a second by Ms. Powers, to approve an award of a bid 2014-33 Before and After School Care at the YMCA of the Sun Coast.
And at this time, I'd like Joanna Castle to come forward, please, and would you tell the board a little bit about the programs at the YMCA we offer north of here?
Sure, absolutely.
Thanks.
Oh, we could have theme music.
I'm not prepared for that. Might have set it up the event the other night, but I'm sorry. Well, first of all, thank you for allowing us to be here and represent our programs. I know that some of you have been able to come out and actually see the program that we already have in place at Homeless Sassa Elementary School. And I have to say, since we started at the beginning of this year with zero children, I'm very happy that we have built that program up to almost, almost 30 kids, between 25 and 30 kids. And we've been able to do that, provided that we offer financial assistance to a lot of the families in the area. And it's, it's really amazing to be able to give these families that are working parents the opportunity to have quality, affordable childcare, which was something out of their reach previously. We also have a great, strong partnership with the Early Learning Coalition that helps to, that helps us to provide the financial assistance to those families as well. So going forward, we look to continue to strengthen those relationships and offer that care to those kids and those families here in Citrus County that may not have been able to have that in the past. So the program, basically, it's a program, and we have, we're able to do snack time and homework time. We also have it built around centers, which include arts, drama, they include math, science, history. So basically, the kids kind of get freedom of choice. They can come to the program, start with a snack, have their homework, and then we have our centers placed out for the kids to have freedom of choice. And then we also include physical activities, so they go outside and play, or when it's rainy, we do safe, fun things inside the cafeterias for the kids, so that, because it's really important for them to get physical activity during the day. And we try to incorporate, incorporate at least 30 minutes of physical activity each day in the program. And so the program's been going great. Tracy Krips is our site director there. She's done an excellent job initiating the program and moving it forward. So just to give you a little bit about the YMCA, about how, where we come from and how large of an organization we have, where we're stemming this program from, is we have, we are the largest before and after school care provider in the nation, and we have been for the last 30 years. We have programs already established in Penales and Hernando Counties, and we supply care to about 5,000 youth at 51 childcare program sites already, teaching academic skills and character development values in a fun and safe atmosphere. So we really have a long history of providing childcare, and we're really happy to bring that here to Citrus County. Yes, currently, we do before and after school care at Homeless Sassa. Our program starts at 6:30 in the morning, and then we run it until the school day begins around 8:50, and then we resume when school is released, and we have the program until 6 o'clock at night for parents. We also add the benefit of care over the spring break, winter break, and Thanksgiving holidays as well.
And what about our famous half days? That's always been a-
Oh, yes.
-a question for us about, you know, can we provide some at school? So you all are going to do that as well?
Absolutely. Yes, we currently do that now, and in most cases, there's no additional fee. Because we're already there, so we do it. And also, we would like to extend the discount to the school administration staff, the teachers, faculty, and so on and so forth, to help make sure that their children are able to come to our programs as well. So that's built into the bid.
And because of their flexibility with scholarships, we had our daycare program at Homeless Sassa for several years. We had to close it down because we didn't have enough students at, you know, participating, and then Y took over and was able to offer that to those students on there. So we're excited, and I know Joanna's been in touch with all the principals, and they will make that as a great transition from what we're doing to where we're headed.
Absolutely, and we have obtained licensing for the program. So once we started the program at Homeless Sassa, we put the intent in to become a licensed program through the Department of Children and Families, and very shortly after that, in September, we were able to receive licensing through the state. And that really just speaks volumes to the quality of the programs that we have, the high standards that they have, and the Early Learning Coalition as well. Having a partnership with them is very important, because all of those organizations come out and monitor your programs and evaluate you, and so far, we've done very well on all of our evaluations. I'm proud to say that, so.
Mr. Blocker, and you can answer this from where you are. Were we ever able to offer sliding scales to our, you know, to the parents to be able to?
We have none.
We did one time. We did one year, and the requirements were so stringent on what we do, it required a lot more staff, and it got to be where we couldn't meet the needs and, you know, provide what we needed to do, but it was only one year.
So I'm excited that the YMCA, we're going to be able to offer that to parents, because as a community that has 65% free and reduced lunch, being able to have that is potentially going to not just be a savings, but be an opportunity where parents actually can have quality after-school and before-care that maybe some have not been able to at this time and for. I'm excited that your capital plan has been moving along quite successfully, and I think that you're nearing, you know, I think you can taste it almost. Am I not correct?
You're right.
How close, you know, is the hope at this point?
We're getting very close. I mean, certainly, our goal is to have finished the capital campaign by the end of the year, if not sooner.
And that would just, again, provide additional, you know, opportunities for this program, for that to grow as well. And I think that maybe people don't understand, really, this, the cost of the sliding scale and the operations of the after-school program, it's not part of the capital plan. That's part of just maintaining and providing the excellent service of that before and after-school care.
That's right, and I'm glad you brought that up, because there certainly are, there's two different campaigns that we have going. A few nights ago, we actually had an event where we raised the money to support our operational costs. That helps offset some program expenses and provide that needed financial assistance to all of those families, so that we don't ever have to turn anyone away. And I will tell you, I'm very proud to say that since I've been the executive director here at the Y for about two and a half years now, I've never had to say no to somebody based on their ability to pay for a program. So that's something that the Y brings that's very unique. If you can't pay for it, it doesn't matter. We're going to get you in and get your child or you involved in a YMCA program.
And what are your plans for the summer?
Well, the summer camps, we actually already have camps planned, so we're already in the thralls of getting that going. We're going to host a camp at La Canto Primary, Inverness Middle School, and Christopher M. Middle School again this year. And that is for kids that are grades K through fifth grade, and then again, for any child who's of middle school age. We offer care for middle school age children as well, so. Bring 'em on. You know, we had, we had over 300 kids last year, so I'm anticipating a nice increase this year or so. We've got, we certainly have the capacity, so we've got the benefit of being in the schools. It's wonderful. Parents love it. It's a great, safe environment. Some of the kids that are regulars feel very comfortable in there, in that environment, and through the partnership with the school system, we're able to provide the free lunches and breakfasts. And that's a big thing, because those kids who count on those meals for the school year, they don't go without over summer.
That was going to be my question. Is that where we're going to be hosting the, our summer feed program? That's outstanding. That is truly outstanding.
And you also have field trips going like to Mozy?
Yes, we do lots of different summer activities. They do bowling, putt-putt golfing, swimming. We incorporate field trips, and like you said, long-distance field trips, at least once. Most of the time, it's twice a week. So we do that, lots of sports programs and things like that. But the other big thing that we offer in our summer camps is physical activity component. They get at least 60 minutes of physical activity every single day. We use President's Fitness Challenge Tools to record that data, so it's great to keep them active.
And I notice the people on staff, their experience if a child has a special need, special, that you have people to help with?
We do. We don't provide one-on-one care. However, we certainly have children that do have special needs, that come to our camps, autism, so on and so forth, and we've been able to work really well with those families and those children in our programs.
What's the cost they like for a week of activity in the summertime?
It's $89 a week, absolutely no discounts. Of course, we do have some special incentives and things like that. It's $89 a week. That includes field trips, all transportation, and pretty much all, you know, anything that they're doing material-wise that they, you know, they would do at camp.
That's amazing, because my daughter, who lives up in the Washington DC area, pays for her children each $600 to $700 a month.
Wow. So you're getting a deal here. And I didn't tell you about me instead. So there's, there's actually some really good things that we have going on. And I didn't mention this, but the middle school age camp is actually a community service-based camp. So they go throughout the community and do things, like they'll go do the One Break at a Time project with the Rotary, and they'll go and clean up the Wiccoochie Trails. So they are actually earning volunteer service hours and learning about the community needs, all at the same time as getting out in a field trip and, you know, having a lot of fun and spending some time together and building relationships. So it offers some really good opportunities.
Body into the citizenship of Citrus County, they don't need that.
Exactly.
And Ms. Howell said if you offer synchronized swimming, that she'll actually be there as well.
Wonderful. We need a tree for all. Me neither. I'll start it if you guys actually promise you're going to participate. We'll start that.
We could certainly do a nice fundraiser next. Would you, would you spend some time and maybe just introduce some of your board members that are in the audience today?
My pleasure. We have Jewel Lam. Jewel Lam is co-chair of our capital campaign, and she also is our annual giving chair from last year. Jerry Mulligan, he's our board chair and co-chair of our capital campaign, and so much more. And Liz Dubuque, she is our COO and Executive Vice President of the YMCA of the Sun Coast.
I know this has been a true love and desire to get this, this project going. Mr. Mulligan, you've talked about how YMCA played an intricate part of your own childhood, and it certainly was a compelling story to me to say the difference that that can make in the community. So thank you all for putting that forward, bringing that forward, and really providing us with a level of service that we've not been able to provide to our students.
Well, I appreciate it, and I have to say, you know, it's been wonderful building the relationships over the years with your schools and your principals, and they really have welcomed us with open arms. And I'm just, I'm so excited about being able to go this next level with you and really get involved in the schools and offer these programs to the kids. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Board members, is there no other questions? Then I, do you have any other questions before we move? All those in favor? I motion carries 5-0. And moving right along, I believe, are we on budget update number six?
Actually, couple before that, approve the budget amendment number six.
Yeah, that's what I did. I apologize. Approved Budget Amendment Number Six.
That we approved Budget Amendment Number Six for February 2014?
I have a motion by Ms. Deutschman, a second by Ms. Powers, to approve Budget Amendment Number Six, February 2014. Any questions? Did you have any highlights on that?
Not much really to mention on this one. It's pretty much zeros across the board, but there is the general fund. There is a new revenue of about $5,400, and appropriation changes of $5,500, so there's, it's pretty much a wash on that. So there's not really much in there.
All those in favor? I motion carries 5-0. Budget update.
I have the HR.
Oh, I'm sorry, HR. I'm moving too fast here.
Before you make a motion on that while you're reviewing it, I just want to make one change. Under resignations, we have Teresa Alvarado, IMS Assistant Principal. We would wish to make a pen and ink change and put that to retirement. That was just called in like five minutes before the board meeting started, so.
Do we just need to add that?
Can we make a pen and ink change?
Or can we do a pen and ink change, or do we actually need to lift it up? Just make the motion that includes it?
I saw the approval of the instructional support recommendations with the change for Teresa Alvarado from resignation to retirement.
Great, I'll second.
I have a motion by Ms. Deutschman, a second by Ms. Balfour, to approve the instructional support recommendations with moving Ms. Alvarado from resignation to retirement. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor? I motion carries 5-0. Now, budget update.
Yes, okay, so we're involved in the session with the budget going on, the legislation, legislature. You know, the Senate has put out their budget now, and the House has their budget. They've announced their, essentially, their team, they start coming together and putting together the final budget. Previously, we had spoke to y'all about our FTE forecast, which is going to be about decounding enrollment approximately 400 students. Well, since the time we have last met, DOE had actually called us and communicated with us that there were some errors in their forecasting model. We were one of about nine counties in the state that they experienced an error. So we went back and actually redid it. We amended it to where now our enrollment is going to be declining by approximately 200. Still not good, but it is better than 400. It's only 200 now. So that will have some changes. They were having some reviews this week by, for their forecasting of their other, other money for the end of the year and for next year. So we've asked them to include that change in the FTE. We've also asked them to include the change in what we perceive to be the new, our forecasted property value. I talked to Les Cook. He did give us some kind of forecasting of what the property values are going to be, which was much different than what the estimates are on all the budget runs. So we asked them to please include the changes in that. I know Les Cook had been working with Department Revenue at the state level to hopefully go through all that. So this week, their estimating conference, where hopefully they're making those changes.
More or less?
Less. Based on what they negotiated the settlement with Duke Energy, the property value is going to be a lot less than what the governor and the Senate and the House were having up there, because that does have an effect on our funding, whether it be the discretionary local effort, required local effort, or the sparsity, et cetera. So there will be some changes made. Hopefully, they'll incorporate those changes. We won't have to wait till July at the second calculation. So we do know that essentially, the governor's budget, as we reported to you before, based on our old numbers as we know them now, but it's essentially about less than a half a percent increase, or about $427,000. The Senate was coming in even less than that, about $344,000. The House, though, was coming in a little less than 1%, but about $844,000 there increases. So we're hoping the House prevails naturally, because that's the one with the most money in it. Don't know what's going to happen. The other thing we do know, FRS rates will once again climb. The negotiated rates between the two houses seem to be quite similar. We estimate, though, the impact for us is going to be roughly, and this is merely a real forecast, roughly around $375,000. That'll be the increase in our expense to FRS, based on the new rates. And the majority of the increase is coming from the unfunded actuarial liability. That's the update there, and we'll come back at our budget workshop two weeks from today and start revisiting the budget, see what we're looking through, the first runs that we're footing through, after we've met with all the schools, district administrators, running through our personnel changes and whatnot. So we'll come back to you two weeks from today and give you a real update as to what the numbers are looking like. We'll also incorporate the capital. We've been meeting with our capital administrators to see how that's looking. Now, please note that with the property value going down to where they're looking at, our capital dollars are going to be coming down consistently with that number. So we certainly won't have as much in capital next year as well. The last thing I wanted to mention to you is I did get the, the signed, agreed two settlements from the judge in the Duke Energy case, where the 2012, the 13 case are settled. And I have gotten a commitment from the tax collector that the corrected bills to Duke Energy were mailed out last Tuesday, so they have 30 days now to pay their due, their tax bill that's due. Essentially, for us, I know I gave you all an early estimate some time ago, that I felt like it was going to be around 3.2 million. What the tax collector is telling me that they have reconciled is going to be closer to 3.8 million. And that's probably got some due with some interest and everything that I didn't calculate that in there. So, but keep in mind, that 3.8 million, the majority of that's going to go right back to the state from what they refunded us back on the required local effort. We will get to keep what capital. I had estimated earlier about $600,000, $700,000 with this increase. It may be closer to maybe the million-dollar mark we may get in capital. But remember, 3.8 million is a far cry from what we had thought we were owed, you know, over the past two years, it was approximately about 25. So it's not much of what we had, what we had hoped for, because what they had settled for was very close to what they had actually paid in their debt payment, so.
And Mr. Blocker, just for clarification, particularly to the public, is that while we're pleased to get the capital dollars, the operational dollars in the general fund was where really that has a bigger bearing on us, because in the capital, we just simply could adjust what projects and amend those or push those out, as opposed to the capital where we actually have to reduce.
The good thing, if there's a, you know, yeah, is that we know. There's a known commodity now. We're not going to be essentially coming back in December and making some changes like we had been. So we know what the property value is going to be next year. Any other, yes, ma'am?
The information we've been given, it appears we can have some empty seats.
Yes.
Throughout the county. And I was wondering, is there a way to save money and at the same time not have to cut all the great programs that are going on? I think as a board, we need to at least have a discussion regarding our, our options, and I think we need some specific information, like transportation. I remember when my grandson was in gifted, he was transported from one school to another for gifted. Dual enrollment, AP, can AP move to schools closer to them and save money? I don't know. Staff cost, what staff we're going to lose due to lower enrollment? If we're going to lose guidance services, TOSSes, resource teachers, aides. It's good for those students in these schools. Is it better education? aides? It's good for those students in these schools. Is it better educationally for the children to have the services regardless of the location? That's just a question.
Ms. Bryant, I think it's an excellent question. And I know we've been doing that in support services and we've kind of dreaded having to go down this road in educational services, but I don't think it's going to change anytime soon. And I would concur with Ms. Bryant. I think we need to be looking at that.
Well, I think we need to find out first what recommendations have been made. Last year, some recommendations were made, cut some positions that we weren't aware of. So, probably we want to know what the schools have been told so far and what kinds of reductions in staff they've been told to expect. I think I heard at one time, La Canto High School, potentially could use those 13 teachers.
That's correct.
And then when I came to someone from La Canto, they said, "Well, in reality, when we looked at the classes and all that, it was probably going to be around eight." So, probably we need to know what have they been told, what is their expectation?
They've been told to lose 13 units.
We need to know all those numbers for all the schools and the programs that have been told to be cut.
Right now, I think-
Mr. Davis just had a heart attack, but we're going to be getting EMS in here shortly.
He's well aware, all the schools have been communicated with us to, well, the expectations were with the FTE, decrease in what units they have been losing. So, they've all been working toward those numbers, those goals. They're working with us. Keep in mind, it is a little tougher at the high schools, we know that. But they've been working with Mr. Mulligan, myself, and Swain, and Mr. Bishop, in trying to achieve those.
But all those cuts so far, it's a composite staffing plan.
Well, the staffing plan was based on an expectation of 400 students less than what we have now. But now you're saying the forecast is going to be like 200.
Right, we made those adjustments.
So, you're still saying 13?
Those were in high schools.
None of them?
Those adjustments were made at elementary and middle.
The Canto High School right now is looking at, what, 1478, 1488?
Their forecast next year is 1501. I think they're going to be around 1488.
Right. And their numbers are very similar to Citrus High School. But we do want to be clear today, we are not laying off any teachers. That we pretty well have all the elementary school teachers placed, the middle school teachers placed. And if there's any high school, and we've worked with all three high school principals, that if there's any teachers that need to be moved, they will be moved to open positions either at middle schools or at the elementary world, depending on their certifications. If we have to move a teacher and ask them to teach something else, we will pay for them to get their certification if we have to move them. Mr. Davis, I think yesterday was up to about 10 teachers. And I don't believe that they've cut programs and they're still looking at course requirements. So, this has been like a three-step phase already. And we know we're going to go to phase four and phase five, depending on course requests from students.
We still don't have all the data. We don't know our level ones and twos and reading based on this year's test yet. Some of that, how many students get to pass the PERT test. So, there's still a lot of information principals will need before they go to school.
But we have been very clear to the high schools that if you've got courses out there with eight students in it, you need to tell those teachers to recruit kids in your program because we are not, we are not physically able to be able to go out there and fund those classes.
So, you're going to tell the high school kids, "Don't we need more physics for you?"
No. We're telling the physics teachers, "If you want to teach physics, then you go out and recruit." And we know there are students out there who will take those courses.
One of the things, and I was going to say this later, but I think it's actually pertinent right now, is that, and this is not as much for financial benefits, but I am questioning that it's time. I have been very supportive of the block. I have, especially when I first came onto the board, asking the questions and seeing the value. After talking with administrators, as being a parent that's been having to deal with the block as a, with a student in ninth grade, and in talking with teachers that were supportive of the block, I think that there's, that we've come to a point that I think we need to rethink whether this is right for students. And in particular, when you add the new testing situation to them, as to what that's going to happen. This block has, has been a challenge for us. It's a staffing challenge. It's been a, it's been a little bit of an economic challenge, but it's becoming really an academic challenge now for our students. And it seems like fewer students each year are benefiting by it, by as many as perhaps is doing it. Now, I'm not suggesting next, this coming school year make a change, but I'm wondering if we should take a true academic approach as we come into next year to really look at that and ask the superintendent to reevaluate that so that as we come into next year, we know that either we are going to continue to commit, or maybe we need to, it's time to reevaluate it and do, and let the block go away.
You're saying purely academic. What exactly?
What, I'm sorry. What I mean is, is that I don't, I never wanted to make the decision purely based on, "Oh, we're going to save X number of dollars, and so that's why we should change away from the block." I want to do what's best for our students. And so, what's to me driving my change in thinking is not the economics of whether it's better for our district, but whether it's better for our district because of students. So, and that was something that, this is, again, this is one board member. So, I would ask the rest of you board if you would have any interest in doing that. And if so, I think we need to give direction.
That could be part of the same study.
Yeah.
Ways to save money. I had to call it that.
And you know, we had the MGT revised study recently. I know I served as the board member on that. They brought up a lot of suggestions, a lot of ways of trying to, how do we bring students into some of our schools that, where there's, where we haven't been having the growth. And I'm wondering if we should go back and look at those notes and have that conversation, what could we be doing there? And that goes, I think, Ms. Bryant, with what you're saying is, you know, is there, is there a way that we can maybe increase enrollments in some of our schools or whether, you know, what we do to run them more efficiently?
And Ms. Bryant, we were also talking about students from one school going to another school for like a physics class.
Absolutely.
So.
Well, we talked about doing that virtually. We have some of our high school principals who have had an opportunity to talk to them about it. If there's a challenge, you can just tell them, "Have somebody supervise the students while I'm on line." You know, I'm not sure that a computer lab would work, but I don't know how that's supposed to be done. But back to the issue of the block schedule, I think one of the prevailing issues may be the opportunity for students to take their courses stamps. And I think I was hearing somewhere along the line that they were going to reduce the number of opportunities for Algebra I, that every student needs to take the path to get a high school diploma, to one or two times a year, not in December next year. Is that right?
We don't, I don't think we know that.
We don't have a final answer on that, but that's one of our concerns.
We've inquired to the state. We've shared with the schools that we are not going to share anything until we get a confirmation from the state, but they have not laid in yet because they're waiting for that transition. But retakes are scheduled for the summer. But as of the December, we don't know that for Algebra I.
As of 14, 15, we don't have a testing day for Algebra I's?
No.
Wow.
That's correct, ma'am.
Hence why we don't have a calendar picture.
Well, I know that, but the Algebra I also is very critical because you're asking the students to sit out of the class for five months, four months, and then you can pay on it. That determines whether they get the credit and whether they graduate from high school.
And that becomes that question again of that block, of whether that serving is right when if you've got that Algebra I in that first block.
And we do have high schools out there that have modified some of their schedules that isn't the true block. They'll do AB days, or they do courses with English, and then next month they teach something else so that our students can be in reading or math or something for the full year. So, we know there's modified schedules out there that would be-
And that's what I think that you all would look at. And that's why, to me, it shouldn't be a rush, "Hey, we want to get this done for August." This should be something that we take this time, that we, you know, if this board gives that direction to do that. You know, something too that I will tell you, you know, we talked about how, well, we're giving students an extra credit a year. And that is great. But, for example, and this is something that maybe we as a district can change. Our district, not the state, but our district, as I understand, requires that our students take a PE class. Well, when our students are taking band or they are taking a sports activity, why can that not count? It does, if you're in JRTC, it counts as your PE credit. Could we actually, you know, benefit by allowing our students to have, you know, dance is a physical activity? I'm thinking marching band that is. Clearly, if they are in sports, that's a physical activity, you know. Now, I'm not talking about the health and wellness class, that's a separate situation. But, you know, that would save us one of those opportunities in scheduling, you know, right there. So, that would be something I also throw out too.
And I want to go back to course requirements because after the test, we receive the test scores back, then we'll have a better count on our level ones and twos. And that goes back to the staffing also, how many level one classes we have to offer at each high school. And also, when Ms. Deutman brings up such physics, our high schools know that if we've got just a couple of kids requiring for that, you know, we've still got online courses that we can, you know, focus and put those kids towards that. So, it's not that our high schools are going out and canceling any programs. It's just some of our schools have too many PE teachers, some of our schools have too many science teachers, social studies. That's what we've asked them to look at to get as close to the staffing as they can until we get our final course requirements in.
So, would it be okay to give this to staff and ask them to come back with some preliminary answers for us?
I'm supportive.
When we're saying give this to staff, you-
The transport staff costs, facility costs, block, yes or no, physical activities, anything else?
Well, I'd like to see some combined classes. I know Crystal River High School, they used to do higher level math, two higher level math in the same class. And so, you'd have the numbers to support that class.
Okay, combined classes.
Ms. Deutman, I see you, you're mind thinking but not speaking. So, I, that always makes me thinking and I'm interested in what you're-
Yeah, we have, we've had in place the last couple of years, we even met last year at High School Directions Committee, which probably we need to keep that, that should be an ongoing committee. Because high school now has become the focus of every change, legislatively they're at. It used to be elementary school and high school just kind of ran on its own. But now, high school, every year graduation requirements change, testing changes, you know, everything that we do is focused on high school, getting those kids through to get a diploma. So, we probably need to keep that as an ongoing committee and have that committee be directed to look at course offerings.
What is the name of that committee?
High School Direction.
High School Direction. Callie?
And I have a question for Ms. Bryant so that we're clear when we leave here today.
Actually, we're like-
Because I don't, I hope I get you a list. When you talk about transportation, I get that. When you talk about facilities, are you asking us about some of the schools that have lost those?
We may need to pause it.
I don't know that.
No, say, use the word suspend.
Okay.
Well, and that's, and that's what I think, that MGT study, I would say that that information and that meeting, and Mr. Blocker, I believe you were in with that meeting, Mr. Dixon was, and something you would know because it was your team, that I think that there was some excellent conversation during that meeting as to how to better use our facilities and whether we have facilities that either should be suspended or modified in such a way to better utilize them. And I think that they gave us some suggestions. We really, at that point, we've become worse in particularly a couple of our schools. And so, I think that that's at least a place to start with the facilities, is to maybe pull that out and look at some of that conversation.
The MGT?
The MGT.
Well, that's back in the MGT study. How old is that?
No, that was just within the year. Yeah, we had it updated. Yeah, we had it updated. Because I sat in on that committee where we had conversation with regard to our facilities, how to utilize them, the conditions of them.
So, you were trying to-
And prioritize them. And that was used to help guide the Crystal River High School renovation, the Crystal River primary. And it pinpointed to say whether we continue Crystal River High School Phase Three, which instead we have opted to look at the rehab of the gymnasium. And Ms. Bryant, I want to thank you because I know that that is something that was a hard pill to swallow. And I know you looked at that from an economics perspective and a tough decision. This is that same thing. I think we have to look at that to say, how do we best serve our students? Because we have schools that are 96, 98% occupancy and we have schools that are nearing 50% occupancy. And that was the discussion. And frankly, our secondary schools are, you know, not particularly, our high schools are okay right now. Our middle schools, it's interesting. And then, you know, it's geographical in our district as to it. And it's not like we can easily say, "Well, let's just take a few kids over here and move them over here." It's an entire shift. And so, that needs to be something that's looked at because you can't just simply take a few students from one school and put them, they're not in the right places that we need. And I think that's where staff needs to get together, look at what that is, and come with us with maybe some recommendations.
I ask that while you're exploring the block scheduling, that's one of those, again, pendulum in education. We go back and forth with, throw out the block, bring on the block. When you are analyzing the pros and cons of the block, please keep in mind the next steps, whether that's combining with a dual enrollment, how the impact is with students that may be doing a work-study program. I just ask that you look at those considerations as well. I definitely see the challenges that we have within our budget. I know the creativity within the staff has been on overload, trying to come up with something that will make this budget work. And I definitely appreciate all the efforts. You can feel the energy from the board. Everybody's feeling that pressure now that we've seen what we're facing with the budget restrictions from Duke.
And Ms. Balfour, I think you know too, the block, it has been a pendulum. And I appreciate you bringing that up because it kind of goes through its phases like so much in education does. Right now, the entire state has been moving away from it and we're one of the few districts left with it. And that's why the assessments that they're, that we're being forced with aren't factoring in that block. It's why we've had that conversation too about offering more dual enrollment on our campuses because it is becoming challenging to get that off-campus. I love that off-campus opportunities, but I don't know how we keep doing it all. And it's kind of that old thing, we can have anything we want, but I'm not sure we're going to continue to have everything we want. But it's an excellent, that's why I think that some of these, we have opportunities to take our time and do, and not be reactionary. So, that's why I bring up, for example, block now. I don't think it should be reactionary. I think we need to take a very solid look at it.
Well, I know for some classes, a year-round schedule, specifically math classes, the year-round schedule works better. I've talked to the math, the math teachers that are facing those challenges with block. With other subjects, the block schedule's perfect. So, mentioning the modified, to see what the cost of the modified schedule compared to conventional block, compared to conventional scheduling. I know that we're asking a lot out of you and your staff as far as bringing that data to the table, but we would certainly appreciate-
And I think block would not come from Mr. Clotter as much as it would come from Mr. Mullin's department on that.
And I would just get a little history on the block.
You've got a lot of this stuff.
We did this every year. Every year, we go to the table about the block. And last week, when I was in Tallahassee, and I had dinner with Commissioner Stewart, she asked us specifically if we were still on the block because very few districts are on the block. And in the past, since I've been superintendent and Ms. Deutman's been board member, I think every year we looked at the data. And there is no one schedule out there that proves that students are more successful on one program or other. We know it all goes back down to the classroom. So, we will certainly look at that. And before Mr. Kennedy goes home tonight, I'd like to give him a heads up that, you know, I meet with the high school group at each high school with our advisory kids. And funny you bring that up tonight because this past week, I asked all three groups if they liked the block. And I specifically targeted the freshman kids. And Mr. Kennedy's son was very proactive on the block. And he said, and he wanted to know why Ms. Simmel was asking this question. I said, "Because it's just time for that subject to come up." So, before you get home tonight, you're probably going to be a-
Oh, I know. He's made it adamant. He likes it. We have some spirited conversations about it at home.
I'll blame Mr. Mullin.
I'm going to restate our request for a complete list of every budget cut we have asked our schools to comply with. So, we don't get caught blind inside of you guys this year like we were last year.
Well.
The only cuts we've made in our schools right now are the support staff numbers.
Not because of what they've been told to cut.
The staffing.
It's the support person.
Whatever it is, program.
I don't believe there's any program currently that-
We've not asked any program cuts.
We have four requests, I think, from the last budget workshop that we're prepared to come back for the next budget workshop. One was staff administrator ratios, two-mile versus one-mile ratio in the bus transportation. What they asked was for the education foundation from the superintendent and the chairman. And the third one's about virtual classes within the district. Those are the four items that we're prepared to bring back. And yes, we will bring back to you and show you all the proposed budget cuts. We've been talking about those. And we've certainly been told, you know, certain programs would not go away. So, we are looking at that. Remember, we still have the issues of making up the deficit as well as now I'm telling you about the FRS increase. There's a lot of stuff that we have to go through to make sure we make the budget balance.
But we've not asked our schools to cut any programs. The only thing we've looked at are staffing numbers based on students.
Ms. Deutman, now, are you looking at attrition issues too that when we sometimes will- sometimes will not replace or?
You know, that we can't control.
Okay.
But, you know, if I'm hearing that our schools are being told that they're to use their staff, I'd say, gee, we need to know, we need to really understand what those numbers are. We need to always be aware of what those numbers are and what that means to schools. Not after the fact, oh, we cut eight this year.
No, I think we've been certainly talking about that for the last few budget workshops.
We need to look.
We can bring that. But I know we had those numbers at our last workshop when we showed the, especially the high schools, because those were the ones that really decreased numbers. But we can bring all that.
The elementary school numbers were pretty firm right now, but high schools, it's going to change as we continue to get more information on their.
We don't know where those kids are going.
Wish we did. We don't know. Do we need eight English teachers and nine math teachers? Or do we need nine math teachers and eight English teachers?
Has anybody kept up with Pope John Paul? What's happened with their?
Yes. I was at a dinner that night, and I had a family tell me they just gave us their two students. I hugged them.
And I've got two swimmers that are from there.
Are they, are they being, on the fifteenth of April is when they're going to know?
The, one of the, the comments that I'm hearing from some of the families is that even if it, if they do make a some way to survive this, there's some families that are just not sure that they want to continue in that because they're not unsure of where that's going to go. And so they seem to be making arrangements at either at other school, either other public or private schools.
And I'll talk to a couple of the other private schools, and they don't think that they have the space to absorb all the Pope John Paul students.
And unfortunately Trinity is not, the, not Trinity, but the smaller, the yid mills, is not, I think, going to be able to accommodate as, as easily, not because of numbers, but because of the travel. A lot of the parents are just not going to.
They'll make a point with their athletes.
Yeah, that's bad they will. Bad they will. Board members, any, any more on this that we need to give direction or? Okay. Mr. Block, do you have what you need for the moment?
Oh, I think I do.
Okay. Thank you, sir. School operations. It is Mr. Mullin, Mark Clotter. And Mr. Clotter, I know what you're going to be bringing forward, and I appreciate that. I, I just kind of also want to lift out a, a quote because I think it's pertinent to what you're going to do. Walt Isaacson wrote a book that many of us have read on Steve Jobs. And he quotes Mr. Jobs when it comes to the following. He, Mr. Jobs said, "All books, learning materials, and assessments should be digital and interactive, tailored to each student, and providing feedback in real time." Kind of a concept that our assessment, our state assessments have not quite figured out how to do. I know that that's something in a large part of our district has been doing, whether that's through the student response systems and our one-to-one. And so thank you for coming forward and sharing this. And I'm actually excited that we have some principals in the audience because I think this is some really exciting stuff.
Just going to start out with just two things before I actually turn it over to our, to our guests today. I want to inform the board that we have been contacted by the United States Department of Education in order to meet with our district staff in my department in regards to monitoring the state's implementation of Race to the Top. As you know, when Mrs. Curry actually retired, I actually took over the Race to the Top. We are in our fourth year, and we are one of three districts that actually have been chosen for this opportunity. What they will, what this will consist of is basically two roundtable discussions will actually take place on May twenty-eighth. One with the administrators from the district level who actually oversee the MOUs for Race to the Top. And then the other one will actually be a report that we're actually going to be submitting this Friday to the Department of Education on our responses to our MOUs to the Department of Education at the, at the national level. So again, we're kind of honored by this. It is an opportunity for us to provide some feedback to the state. And just a, another item, and that is for our awareness to, to you, that we have twenty students from Citrus County Schools that are actually attending the State Science and Engineering Fair. They traveled off in the rain this morning down to Lakeland, and so we're looking forward to their success.
Also, Mr. Block.
And then a reminder that this Friday, or Saturday, we will actually be conducting our annual Math Field Day, and Mr. Kennedy is actually sharing the shirts that will be given away to our students that are awarded first place.
And was this again designed by a student?
Yes, sir. It was designed by a student. Blue's Crystal River High School. Yes, Crystal River High School. We will bring that group back. As you know, we'll bring that group back as the winners for the.
And board members, there is an endearing story that if you get with Mr. Brady or Mr. Clotter, that will tell you the story about the, the young student that came up with this design. Mr. Blocker, I'm just going to ask before you introduce, because we are real, Mr. Blocker, I'm sorry, that we are just at our.
I understood.
Thank you. I know you. We're at our five o'clock. And so I'm going to just see if we have, um, Crystal River Highs, and we've got our superintendents' Making a Difference Award. And so Ms. Hamel, I'm going to turn it over to you. And I want to again thank you for bringing these because, as you know, we can't ever have enough students coming into our chambers.
Hey, our first student we're going to honor today is from Crystal River High School. And I'm going to ask Ms. Tugle, Janet Tugle, to speak on his exciting.
This afternoon, I have the honor to tell you a little bit about an outstanding Crystal River High School student, Tyler Phillips. Tyler's a seventeen-year-old junior with a three-point-six-eight GPA. Tyler currently is taking AP US History, AP Chemistry, AP Calculus, and serves as an executive intern. He is an active member of the academic team, calculus club, chemistry club, and a student representative on the superintendent's committee. Tyler has completed over a hundred hours of community, community service, most of which are tutoring our future pirates at the middle school. As you can see, Tyler's an accomplished student. But that is not all that I'd like you to know about Tyler. As educators, we are often experiencing those times when a student takes us a little bit by surprise. Sometimes a student, for no apparent reason, goes out of their way for someone. A surprise that grips us to our core and reminds us all why we became educators. Tyler Phillips recently gave me just such a surprise. Early one foggy morning, I walked out in the student parking area with several black plastic bags in one hand and my school radio in the other. Donning gloves, I began to pick up a little bit of trash. And as I was busy tending to my chore, a car drove up and a young man jumped out. "Mrs. Tugle, what are you doing?" I proceeded to tell the young man that I just didn't like the trash on our beautiful campus and decided to pick it up. He quickly said, "I'm going to help you." Together, we filled a large, tri-lattic lawn trash bag with various forms of trash. Tyler never once stopped help from helping. Never once did he look around to see if someone might witness this heroic trash collecting. No, not Tyler. He continued to help me pick up trash. We talked about school, football, and working out until the trash bag was so full we could barely fit it in the back of the golf cart. As I thanked him for the hundredth time, he just turned to me and said, "It's no problem." Tyler Phillips surprised me that morning. He surprised me by showing me that students care about their surroundings no matter their age. They care about their school. He showed me compassion and respect, as his new assistant principals are paths crossed, but I really hadn't learned a great deal about Tyler, until that cold, foggy morning when a young man decided to help his administrator pick up trash. Since that day, Tyler has continued to the academic achievements. He will participate in Boise State this summer and plans to attend THE University of Florida to become a pharmacist. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm filled with pride to introduce to you one fine young man, a model citizen of our community, and one outstanding pirate, Tyler Phillips.
And I think as you heard Ms. Tugle read what she wrote about Tyler, because she wasn't sure if she would get through the entire presentation, I don't know if you know how much you tug on her cord. I think that's a kind of a back-and-forth feeling. So thank you for what you do in making Citrus County Schools a success. Thank you. Our next person is no stranger to our Making a Difference Award, and Ms. Bandauer will come forward. And yes, she was here last month. And, um, but when you go by La Canto Primary School, you see gardens, you see kids drinking slurpees, and you see all kinds of things, and the pro NFL, sixty-minute play. No, I want you to talk about everything. I want you to tell them all about you. So, um, she wants to show her students off. She's got a bike that makes drinks, and, um.
I think the bike's nice.
And she's going to give us a treat. So Ms. Bandauer, do you want to break through for our.
Now, see, I thought I was going to have to stand up there and be all embarrassed.
You got it, right now?
Yeah.
And have everybody tell about me so I can kind of keep it real short. All right. First of all, I want to let you know what we're talking about for the edgewinn today was actually indirectly a result of what you all did. First of all, I wrote a grant three years ago with Educational Foundation to develop a nutrition detective team. And it started out as an after-school show, and, um, an after-school program that presented a morning show for healthy living and being active. So that was at Foundations. That started it. And then, um, this past year, because we got to have in-service finally, which we haven't had in years and years and years, that actually related to PE because we had half-days and all the PE teachers couldn't get together, we, Mr. Sheffield brought in the National Dairy Council. And they explained to us in detail what Fuel Up Place Sixty was. And if Fuel Up Place Sixty, I had signed up as an ambassador and an advisor years ago, but it really didn't make that much sense to me. Then after we did the training, I said, "Oh, my gosh, and there's money." So we're going to share with you some of the things. So first, I want to introduce Bella Adams. She was our very first ambassador. You have to get thirty thousand points to become an ambassador. So that means you have to track your eating, your daily eating. And I don't want to give away her presentation, so I'll let her talk. All right, Bella, pull it up. I need, I might need some help. Let me see. Let me check real quick and see if I got it. I'm going to put in, I'm putting it in a USB port. Can I get that? And then if you can't see anything, you're all right. Yeah, I know. I said, you've got to come. I know. You've got to be here and help us. And in addition to that, we're going to show you a couple of video clips, and then we're going to demonstrate this movie and give you all and everybody in the audience a sample. All right? And then there's Bella Adams.
You love to play sixty by Bella Adams. What to do to stay healthy and active. You love to play sixty. It encourages kids to be healthy and active sixty minutes a day and eat healthy. Once you sign up, you can earn points and badges for eating healthy and being active. The points and badges you can add up to prizes. I earned a beach towel and a water bottle. Here's a picture of some prizes, of the prizes we run for our school. Here's some pictures that show kids have fun.
All right. The next two are members of our actual nutrition detective team, Tyler Olson and Tristan Woods. And Tyler's going to tell you about the videos, and then Tristan's going to tell you about a special project that we were finally sent.
The Nutrition Detective Team is an organization for teaching our fellow students about healthy eating and ways to achieve an active lifestyle. We make videos which are later aired on our school-wide morning show. These videos cover all types of topics such as healthy living, easy cooking recipes for home, and fun ways to stay active. I will show you some of our crazy moves. La Canto Primary students can really bust a move. Our videos always start with an avatar and seed. The middle has recipes, healthy eating, or fun activities. The ant always closes with the day's tips for healthy living.
Welcome, school board members. You will be watching clips from a variety of episodes produced by the Nutrition Detective Team for our morning show.
Full garden picking some carrots for our new recipe. And you guys are the ones that picked, that planted those seeds.
Whoa, that is a big carrot.
Churro, chile, or twenty. Next, add green lime zest.
Welcome back to Nutrition Detective. Today, we are featuring a very important topic. It's bullying. First, let's hear a message from our principal. Good morning. I am your principal, Mrs. Lofton. Today, we are going to watch a video about bullying that was created by our Nutrition Detective Team. We do not tolerate bullying. Please don't be a bystander. Speak up against bullying. Day's tip for healthy living is match screen time with active playtime. If you play video games, use the computer or talk mobile phone for thirty minutes, then match that screen time with thirty minutes of outside play. If you play video games, talk mobile phone, or use the computer for one hour, then match that screen time with one hour doing something active like riding your bike, swimming, or chasing your dog. Matching screen time with playtime will help keep you healthy. Bye for now and see you next week.
So that's a little sample. So thanks to the Education Foundation, we have been doing that project for three years. So we have lots of samples. So it was hard to pick. All right. Next, I'd like to introduce Tristan Woods, and he is going to tell us about a contest that we entered recently.
Our Nutrition Detec, okay. Our Nutrition Detective Team created some recipes and entered them into the Gridiron Breakfast Challenge. One of our recipes was selected for the cook-off finals at the Tampa Bay Buccaneers Training Facility. Our team was timed and judged against other winners. We ate breakfast and lunch in the same room. We're the coaches and players
other winners. We ate breakfast and lunch in the same room where the coaches and players ate. We placed second, and we are very proud of that achievement. Here's a short video to show you the fun.
So there you have it. It was, it's a lot of fun. I even walking in here today, Jerry Mulligan saw me on the way out and said, "You're still a teacher." I said, "Yeah," because I am having way too much fun. And thank you.
Ms. Vandauer, would you share with the group how many thousands of dollars you've received in grant money?
More than thirty thousand. Five thousand just for sure. And we have had, you know, a lot of that, you know, it sounds like it's really hard to do, but it isn't. I always encourage teachers, find something that you're already doing and then look for a grant that matches it. So I have written Nutrition Detective Grant three different times. But each year, I give them new stuff. But so I wrote, a garden grant is three different grants, and one of them was to do healthy eating. So I did Nutrition Detective with Garden. So it's really, it's a lot easier than it sounds. But it was, that's how much we had. So anything else? Thank you very much.
What?
The bike.
Oh, yes. That's the most important part. Now, sometimes it's a little hard to get it started because the food jams it up pretty tight, but we're going to get it going.
Is that what Ms. Lofton makes you do for every day for her rings?
This one's grape, banana. Grapes, banana, and strawberries. And today, we made one with bananas, blackberries, and grapes. That was our taste test.
Hannah, how did you put the bicycle to the blender?
It comes, it's called Rock the Bike.
Oh, the bike with the...
And they use it, you can use it to pedal like in concerts or cell phones.
Really?
Or there's a lot of different things that it does. And that's a tool of the 60. I told her that I wanted to do a taste test Tuesday because to make these recipes, we can do some, yeah. And, and well, this grant is for you and one thousand dollars.
Everybody says Juson's word is, except I fed an ice cream to mine. So I'm missing something here.
I think you got something going there.
You're doing well. You had to say it, though, didn't you?
So Ms. Vandauer, how, are you making smoothies now?
Well, this is our, we did the first one on the National Breakfast Week. We said free smoothie for anybody who ate breakfast that morning. So we went from an average of a hundred and eighty-five breakfasts to three hundred and three. And then this next Tuesday, one of the big pushes is to grab and go. And so in the real near future, after specials, they have specials in the morning, Fourth of Fifth, they're going to have some variety of foods to grab and, and take right there. And so, let's see, we had that smoothie. We had strawberry smoothie. Another interesting thing was, they averaged about fifteen yogurt parfaits for the students during, when they served them. And then we had a parfait sample as the taste test Tuesday. And the next time the parfaits came up, they served fifty-one, ran out, and had to make some more after that. So a lot of times, it's just that they've tasted it, you know, if they like it. So, and then we had another strawberry banana smoothie day. And then I did on Google Docs a survey. Do you like it? Does that sound yummy? Sounds gross? I don't know. And there are odd ones, like ginger and carrot and watermelon. So we're going to try a couple of those down the road here pretty soon, as soon as we're finished surveying. Yeah, yeah. Our next show is going to be, we got it from the Florida Extension Office, Two Bites. Try to do two bites of something you've never had. So our next show's going to be about two bites.
Board members, we're going to take just a ten-minute recess, and we are going to reconvene at 5:30 with our 5:30 sermon.